We are about to begin. We had finished Article 26 and we're on Article 27, which is also, requires a two-thirds vote. On Article 27? Is there a change in the recommendation of the Warren Committee? Okay. Well, it's your recommendation, so... Article 27? You're recognized.
On Article 27, there's a change in the recommendation. The Warren Committee recommends that this be sent back to the Selectmen for further study. At their request. It's their article.
Study. All right, now, I think that either the Warren Committee or the Selectmen should explain why the main motion now is to send the article back to the Selectmen, to the Board of Selectmen for further study. Mary McHettrick, Board of Selectmen, recognized. Select person.
The Board of Selectmen originally submitted this article because we had some concerns that the five-year time limit in the new telecommunications bylaw might prevent companies from citing facilities, towers at all, and might be an impediment long-term in terms of appeals and that sort of thing. We were having some difficulty. We'd sent out an RFP for town sites, and the companies were saying initially, "We really can't apply with a five-year term. We can't build anything with that term." We then went to a hearing process with the Planning Board, and at the hearing, there was one representative from one company who came and said, "No, the five-year term isn't the problem. There was some other issue he wanted to talk to us about." Another company also said they were willing to apply with a five-year term. So at that point, the Board decided that we did not want to pursue this at this time, that we do not want to remove the five-year term limit, or permit limit. So what we're asking for is to send it to study, but do we have to ask for a no vote? Or can we send it to study?
No, it's a perfectly fine motion to send it to the Selectmen for study. Anybody wish to be heard on the current recommendation? Mrs. Fitzgerald? Oops. Still can't hear you. Do we have a technician that can? Hang on. These microphones have to work.
Does that mean it's on? Mary Fitzgerald, Precinct 4. This is not in regards to the article, Mr. Moderator. I ask your indulgence to see if I could ask Mr. Mullin with his town clerk on, hat on, a question.
And what does it relate to? Because...
It relates to the procedures of town meeting. I have in my hand the sign-in sheet with its few inches of twine.
All right, look, I will recognize you after we finish this. This actually, on the parliamentary procedure, cannot be interrupted on a motion to refer. So your next person up, does anybody else wish to address? The main motion here is to refer this to committee, i.e. the Board of Selectmen. Does anybody else wish to be heard on that? It's a non-interruptible type of motion. Okay, all those in favor of the recommendation of the Warren Committee say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Warren Committee's recommendation is adopted. This article is referred to the Board of Selectmen for further study. Now, Mrs. Fitzgerald, you're recognized, and you've got to ask me the question, then I get to sort of screen.
Okay.
You know, who it is, but I...
I realize that...
It's okay for you to suggest who might have the answer, but what is the question of procedure?
I'd like you to ask Mr. Mullin, and before I ask this question, I will say, "I know times are tough. I would wonder if we could get a longer piece of string for our sign-in sheets." Because my name happens, like others, I'm sure, happens to be at the bottom of the list, and there is no way to write with it.
The length of string is constraining the ability to...
To be able to write the name.
Depending upon where your name happens to be placed...
Correct.
For you to dutifully sign in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Raising great anxiety over whether or not you may mistakenly be listed in some future annual report as not having been present when in fact you were present.
Exactly.
That is very stressful.
(laughing).
I agree. I worry about the same thing. Well, I don't know. We'll ask Mr. Mullin if he'd like to address that question.
And if it's a problem, I would be happy to bring in a roll of twine for the town clerk's office.
All right. All right. Mr. Mullin, do you want to in fact say anything on this, other than passing it on through me, that it'll in fact be taken?
Tell you, Mrs. Fitzgerald, that it's a very conservative department. And you, as one who's been here as long as I have, should know that. But in the next override, we are going to have a specific item for string.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mullin, and I gather that answers the member's question. A very good question, too. Article 28 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2001, for the operation of the several boards and committees classified as boards and special committees, and to act on anything relating there, too. The recommendation of the Warren Committee is that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Noncontingent Appropriation," and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation in the column caption "Contingent Appropriation," contingent upon passage by the voters of the Town of Milton of an override ballot question under Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws. For the Board of Appeals, the total is $27,775, noncontingent, zero contingent. Conservation Commission, $10,787, total, zero contingent. Council on Aging, $97,809, noncontingent. $22,704, contingent. Historical Commission, $45, noncontingent. Personnel Board, $27,811, noncontingent. Planning Board, $35,465, noncontingent. $560, contingent. Warren Committee, $17,680, noncontingent. Youth Department, $68,458, noncontingent. $23,542, contingent. Totals of $285,830, noncontingent. $46,806. Is there an amendment by the Warren Committee? There is. Mr. Pavelcheck is recognized.
As mentioned in the last couple of nights, there are two amendments by the Warren Committee. First, on the line for the Historical Commission where it says $45, it should read $1,545. Second, in the Youth Department, the noncontingent appropriation should read in the salaries and wages line, $89,750, and in the contingent appropriation on the same line, zero. That would bring the total for the Youth Department to $92,000, noncontingent, zero contingent. Essentially, that $23,000 is moved across to the other column. That adjusts the totals, the grand total at the bottom, for the noncontingent appropriation And the contingent appropriation column is $22,704. I would also point out, there is one typo in the warrant committee line, of all places. The salaries and wages should say $10,000. That extra $10,100, that one is spurious. It's $10,000 because it does add up to $17,680 on the bottom. That's just a typo.
Anyone wish to speak? Mr. McCarthy is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen would like to propose a friendly amendment to the recommendation of the Warren Committee. We would propose to take the sum of $8,320 from the Council on Aging salary and wages contingent line and move it to the noncontingent appropriation. No, I'm sorry. What, no, no. Forgive me. Wrong motion. I'm sorry. Exactly. We wanted to take, we wanted to add the sum of $8,320 to the contingent appropriation, which would... Can we do the math quick on that? Which would bring the $13,704 to $22,000,004. Bring the department total up to $31,004, and bring the grand total on the bottom of the contingent appropriation to $31,024.
$024.
$024.
And the salary line is $21,024, not $004.
$024. Correct. And what this basically does is adds into the override portion of the budget the sufficient funds to put the outreach worker on a 10-hour basis. Actually, what I'd like to add to the motion, though, is a stipulation by the Personnel Board that this, if approved in an override, be contingent upon the establishment of a job description by the Personnel Board.
I don't think that's in order, to make a contingent appropriation that way. Now, the question is, you've offered this as a friendly amendment. Has this been worked out with the Warren Committee? Is this part of the Warren Committee's recommendation?
The Warren Committee accepts this as a friendly amendment.
All right. So we have one main motion. You're recognized, I think. Yes, sir?
My name is Emmett Schmarzo. I'm Precinct 1. I rise to address this budget in general, or maybe make a comment on it, this particular article. I should note that I'm program manager for Councils on Aging for the Commonwealth, and I'm here on my own behalf. I'm not representing the department or the Council on Aging. When I last checked, last evening, the Council on Aging budget, when communities like to compare themselves, one community to another, I did some comparison with the 26 communities in Massachusetts that are of similar size to the Council on Aging, and discovered that on a per capita basis, the Council on Aging budget in Milton is 56% of the state average for like-sized communities. And should this even pass, it would go up to only 69%. That's related to this because it seems as though people need to understand that when we're trying to increase, find ways to increase taxes, there's also ways to decrease expenses. And specifically, I'm referring to the fact that when elders leave the community, as elders do, and families come in the community, there is a real cost to the community. The average, the local appropriation to the Council on Aging this year is under $16 per elder. The average family that might come into Milton and brings children at a cost, and I won't prepare to, I don't know this figure exactly, $5,000 to $6,000 certainly, per student. It seems to me that the cost of keeping someone in the community is primarily borne through, research shows us nationally, through the informal network, and through the support of organizations such as the Council on Aging. Things like outreach, information referrals, social daycare, minor home repair, and other activities, in particular, transportation, helps to keep an elder independent. If you take away an elder's transportation, you are taking away, in large part, their participation in the community. If you doubt that, try to take away the car keys from an 80-year-old. It doesn't work. And I suggest to you that supporting the Council on Aging and keeping an elder at a mere $15 or $16 per elder versus when they leave, having a family come in and anticipating expenditures certainly well into the thousands for each new child who comes in, represents a serious investment for the community. Elders do not like to move. Elders move less frequently than any other member, any other segment of society. And I think to support elders in their own homes should represent a primary function of a community. And in order to do that, you need to adequately support the Council on Aging. Thank you.
You're recognized.
Karen Friedman-Hanna, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I have a question with the total. Is there a reason why the $560 from the contingent appropriation for the Planning Board isn't being added into the total?
It's an error. Good point. What should the total be, Mr. Pavelcheck? On the 22...
$31,584? Is that what it is?
No, but that comes, the $560 for the Planning Board is going to drop...
Down to the bottom.
Down to the bottom line. So it should only be added to the 22,704?
No.
Oh, there's the 31... All right, so which number changes? $31,584. The grand total is $31,584. On the bottom right. Good catch.
Thank you.
Okay? Anybody else wish to speak? Mrs. Agostino, you're recognized.
Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 8. I'd like to make a motion, and then present my reasons. Section 13, I'd like to move the $31,004... Or actually, you can leave the $4 in the contingent. My math will be easier. I'd like to move the $31,000 into the noncontingent line item. And move the $32,000 under Section 16, Planning Board Consulting Expenses, into the contingent appropriation. Actually, $31,000, to keep my math easier.
Well, the...
The bottom line will not change.
Wouldn't it be better to get the exact amount, $31,024? Otherwise, you're going to have $24 left there. Is that what you really want to do?
It'll still get there with the override.
Do what you want. What's your motion?
I'm just trying...
Is your motion in writing, by the way?
I'll put it in writing.
Well, I need it in writing before we have a motion. Well, Mrs. Agostino is writing out her motion. The reason these motions have to be in writing is we have to get them correct, and Mr. Mullin needs to have the exact wording for reporting purposes and keeping the records of exactly what happens. So that's why it's in the bylaws, and that's why I announce it. Thank you. I want the exact motion. I move that. I need it in the form of a motion. $21,024, salaries and wages in $9,000 for general expenses. And then they added $8320. I'm not sure where. No, that's, no, that was added. That makes the $21,024. I'm concerned if, that we are wasting the time of the members, Mrs. Agostino, unless you have your motion prepared. So should I move on, or are you about to give me a motion? Want to move on? All right. Yeah? Point of order?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Shouldn't we vote on the first motion, friendly amendment?
No, that's not a motion. That is a by-consent change of the recommendation of the Warren Committee. And this motion says, "I move that Article 28, Section 13, Council on Aging, salary and wages, $21,024, salary and wages, general expenses, $9,000." "I move that Article 28, salary and wages, to noncontingent column. Section 16, Planning Board, $31,000, to contingent column." Then this piece of paper says, "COA total, $21,024, 8320, 101317." I don't understand what these numbers mean in the form of a motion, Mrs. Agostino.
Well, Mr. Moderator, as you're well aware, the motion to add $8320 was just made, so my numbers had to be changed. And if someone would like to take a calculator and assist in the motion, I would think that would be most appropriate, because the numbers were just introduced less than 60 seconds before I rose.
Now, what I'm having trouble with is, it says COA total on your motion of $21,024...
You have to add that to the $80,293, so I separated that out.
All right, so that the salary and wages will be a 101317. All right, so the motion is to move 31, the whole amount, $31,024, to the noncontingent. And move $31,000 onto the Planning Board to the contingent column. Is that basically it?
That's correct.
All right, I'll take that. Not very well drafted, but... All right, does anyone second that motion? Okay. Do you wish to be heard on your motion, Mrs. Agostino?
Yes, I do, and as I said, I appreciate your patience.
You're recognized.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience, since the change of numbers did occur at Town Meeting Floor, for the outreach worker that I do support. The reason I am moving the items from the noncontingent from the Planning Board for $32,000, although I find it very important that we do have these consulting expenses available for future planning for the town. Just today, even though I don't work at the Council on Aging, I happened to speak to an elderly woman, who happened to be a Milton resident. Now, I'm in Boston, she's in Milton, and we just happened to end up, that somebody told her, called Diane. She called me up. She called me up about nothing to do with the Council on Aging. But she was telling me her story and her needs. And one of her highlights of her week yesterday didn't happen, because the exercise program had to be canceled. There was another function going on in that room. Now, this is just one elderly person, and we heard last year hours from the outreach workers themselves, from Mary Ann Sullivan, the Director of the Council on Aging, that these people and these services are invaluable to their lives. To listen to her, it was important to her to get out and to be able to talk to other people, as it might be for some of us to go have a ritzy dinner in Boston. Her request is quite simple. My motion does not cost one more dime to the residents of Milton. What my motion does is allows us not to hold an override vote over the elderly heads in the Town of Milton. If we want an override, then let it be for services that are not life-threatening or essential. My motion furthermore says that for all of us, not just in this room, but throughout the town, who want the $32,000 expenditure for consulting expenses, to work for that goal in your override. But intimidation upon people who really cannot vote one more override and have to go to the polls, so torn between wanting the Council on Aging services for themselves and the friends they see, versus not being able to afford it. You've heard the story many times, and I reiterate what was said a short while ago. We don't want these people to move out of Milton. We want them to stay in their homes. Because my street of some 48 homes that used to have a lot of elderly living on it, and only two families with children, now has children in every home. And the number of children that will be moving into the school system will only increase as long as we don't take care of the elderly and provide this small benefit. So therefore, you're not expending one extra dime, but you are taking away the threat to the Council on Aging continuing their services. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Mr. Whiteside?
Alexander Whiteside, Chairman of the Planning Board. The $32,000 on the Planning Board's budget is not new money. If you look at Article 68, you'll see that $32,000 is taken out of the appropriation for this year and put to other purposes. It's simply restoring this year's appropriation. The $32,000 has been committed by the Planning Board. We have a consultant working, probably as we speak, and there is a, this is not new money. We have committed it by contract. We received the money last year, and it is being put to preparation of a final report by the consultant. If we were to stop now, we'd get nothing for the money spent. It would be extremely nonproductive, demoralizing to the town, and I've got to say, very bad planning.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteside. Anne White, you're recognized.
Anne White, Precinct 9. Just a quick question. I know Mr. Whiteside just talked about what the consulting money was for, but could he give, or can someone give a bit more information about what kind of report we're going to get, to see how important this money truly is? And if I'm correct, Mr. Whiteside said the money is basically already spent, or we're not going to get the product we asked for when we put this out to bid? Is that correct?
Mr. Whiteside, could you address that? What kind of, the member would like a little more detail on what report is being prepared, and whether or not the failure to appropriate the $32,000, assuming the override does not pass, what actual effect would that have on the project as it stands now? Is that right, Anne? Okay.
The consultant has been hired to look at the business districts. There has been several public meetings. We've had numerous Planning Board meetings with the consultant. Last Thursday night, we had a three-hour meeting, discussing heading for the finish on this, getting a report saying, identifying weaknesses in the business district, identifying possible strategies to deal with them, identifying possible sources of funds. The, this effort has been going on for six months. If we stop it now, we're going to have nothing to show for it. The report will deal with all these matters. As I say, we received the money last year, and we contracted with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for planning services, and basically, the money that you're looking at in Article 68, the $32,000... at in Article 68, the $32,000 that's going to be transferred to the reserve fund, is being made up by this $32,000 being newly appropriated. But it really is a wash. There is no new money in this budget.
Okay. Does everybody understand that last point? This money was appropriated last year, is being under Article 68, is being brought back into the town's finances for this year and going back out under consulting expenses? Is that correct, Mr. Whiteside? Glenn, is that right? That's right, okay. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Jim May, Precinct 4. We find ourselves in this budget in a situation that we've seen year after year, where we're now in all likelihood going to be asking the town to vote for an override for a substantial amount of money. This is a continuing circumstance that needs to be addressed by planning. It seems to me that it defeats one of our goals here, which is to find a way to avoid needing overrides year after year if we take what little bit of planning money we have away from the Planning Board. If we want to avoid constant overrides in the future, it seems to me we've got to give the Planning Board the money it needs to plan.
Ellen Coakley, Precinct 10. I just wanted to say that last night, we all talked about the fact that we didn't want to balance one town department and town employees against the potential loss of town employees in another account. Now, if we do not fund the Council on Aging and support this motion that's on the amendment that's on the floor, we would be losing Council on Aging personnel at the same time that we would be maintaining a consultant that is not a town employee. And I do not see, is positively a fact, or at least it has to be, that we have not yet expended that money, because it has not yet been appropriated. So if we have not yet expended it, then we do not have to appropriate it. And we should give that money to the bare minimum to our senior citizens first, and then consulting expertise to improve situations in the tax base of this town on the override issue, where it belongs, and it ought to be a strong candidate on the override. So I don't know why people would not, would be afraid of having it there. But under no circumstances do I see why we should be losing town employees in the Council on Aging Department while we are keeping on a consultant who is not a town employee. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lynch?
Mr. Moderator, Mike Lynch, Precinct 6.
You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Last year, most of you, people know that my dad and my brother's dad, Bernie Lynch, gave the $7,800 gift to the Council of Aging. It's very important, not only to my dad, but to the Lynch family, to continue the legacy. This position is a very important position, so I strongly urge Town Meeting to do whatever we have to do to make sure the Council on Aging doesn't play second fiddle to something else. Thank you.
You're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, I have a few questions that have...
Name and precinct.
That have come to light from...
And Mrs. Augustine, you have to give your name and your precinct.
Diane DeTulio-Agostino, Precinct 8. Thank you for reminding me.
Okay.
I have a few questions that came to light from the Planning Board members' comments. Nowhere in Article 28 am I advised that the $32,000 is coming or being used in Article 68 last year. And I'd appreciate if we could first of all have some understanding on that, because we are not, I believe, not an attorney, and you are, but I believe that the town of Milton or any city or town can't sign a contract without funds, first of all, being appropriated. And if... so therefore, if they could first of all explain, you know, I would be willing to amend my motion if an explanation is forthcoming as to this Planning Board Consulting Services, $20,000, Planning Board Encumbered Consulting Services, $12,000, under Article 68, where there is no mention under Article 28.
I'm not sure what your question is. What is your question precisely?
First question. Is the town of Milton or any town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts allowed to contract without an appropriation by a Town Meeting or the authorized body to so appropriate?
All right. Do you have any other questions?
The second question is Article 28 has no comment. We see under Section 16, Planning Board, non-contingent appropriation for fiscal year 2002, a $32,000 line item. But we've been told that that was previously approved. So if the Warrant Committee or someone can please explain what this... where this $32,000 is coming from? I mean, when we look at this $32,000, we're appropriating it in our non-contingent fiscal year 2002 budget that will be funding available fiscal year starting July 1st.
Right. And your question is what exactly?
Well, if you look, it was... the point was raised, Article 68, page 69.
I understand all that. I'm looking for a question, Mrs. Augustine.
That's the question. What really is happening with the $32,000?
The question is what really is happening to the $32,000?
Right.
That's your second question. And do you have any more?
No, I have a comment. I may have a friend, a motion to my... an amendment to my motion based on the answer, if it's explained.
All right. The question, Mr. Flynn, is may the town of Milton or any other town in the Commonwealth... is the town of Milton or any other town in the Commonwealth allowed to appro... to contract without an appropriation?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, the answer is yes, if the town specifies in that agreement that the agreement is subject to funding or subject to appropriation. For example, it's quite commonly done in the collective bargaining situation. The answer is yes to the question.
Anne, the second question is somewhat broader, and I don't fully understand it. Mr. Pavlicek, what really is happening to the $32,000? Or where did it come from, maybe?
Last year, there was planning money in two places in the warrant. There was in the Planning Board article, there was $20,000 allocated. That was allocated last year for the study of the Granite Avenue property that was coming, we thought, at that time, from the state. There was also a separate article for the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission to start the planning process for the business districts and so forth. That process has gone forward. That is the process Mr. Whiteside was referring to, the MAPC money that was separately funded last year was used for that. When the Granite Avenue site did not become available to the town, there was money in the Planning Board budget that had been allocated for the study of Granite Avenue's site. That's the $32,000 that was appropriated through the available funds article at the back. Essentially, what we did was when we were looking for funds to try to fund this particular round of planning, we went back to the unexpended balances in prior appropriations for the Personnel Board, took $32,000 in unexpended balances from there, brought it into this article to re-expend this year. Since that money technically was not under contract to anyone, because the Granite Avenue site was not going forward, to our knowledge, that was an unspent balance that was subject to re-appropriation. And so the available funds article takes that money back. This article would spend that money. Again, that was one-time funds. This is one-time funds. This article would spend that money to continue the planning process. Currently, the planning process is going on, was funded by a separate article last year. This would bring the funding for it into the Planning Board.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Emmett Schmazow, Precinct 1. Just an observation. The planning that we're talking about is physical planning for reuse of available space or use of available space. I suggest that planning could perhaps be brought into a larger context and look at possible ways by which the town could save money, referring specifically to keeping elder residents in the town, by looking at ways to help keep them in the town and thereby reduce the pressure on schools in particular. And I think that the planning effort does not need to just include this business and the potential tax revenues, but possible ways of reducing pressure on town government, specifically the school department. And I would like to suggest that any planning report include elements of how, what kinds of programs, and I have certainly some specific suggestions, that could be incorporated and studied by the town to help make the overall cost of local government less burdensome. Thank you.
Mr. Launey, you're recognized.
Tim Launey, Precinct 9. I don't like the idea of going into the planning department's budget. Planning for this town is one of our most important things, as Jim May mentioned before, to prevent overrides in the future. And for that reason, I don't think we should go into that. At the same time, we don't want to lose a town employee with the Council on Aging, because they have limited resources as it is. I'd like to ask the Warrant Committee if there's any other place in any other budget or on reserve that we can just scrap together just a minimum to avoid losing an employee in the Council on Aging. Thank you.
The general question is, it's a somewhat unfair question, Mr. Launey, because they've made their recommendations. However, Mr. Pavlicek, do you wish to change anything with respect to your recommendations and come up with some other balancing here? Or are you... I think the question is, are you staying where you are?
The Warrant Committee has looked around long and hard to try to find ways not to lay people off in this budget. We've... we're still looking at substantial cuts in various departments should the override fail. I don't see a way to craft together money to save more people than we're saving now without laying off someone else somewhere else. The Warrant Committee at this time isn't ready to amend that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlicek. Mr. Livingston is recognized.
Richard Livingston, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, a point of information... a point of order. Why is it that with that elaborate definition that Mr. Pavlicek has given, the Town Meeting is not made aware in the comments section that this money is coming from an article for the Granite Ave. property that is unused? I feel that it would be appropriate that we know that this funding was coming from an article of last year. We came in last night at 7:30, and we had found $100,000 in an article from 1998, which brings me to the question, and that is, on page 67, Article 64, you have a whole host of articles. And I think it's totally disingenuous to this committee, to this Town Meeting representation, that those bonding authorizations were either not needed or have unused balances that are no longer needed. If the members of this board know or knew how much money were in all of these revolving accounts left over, we could make the determination to take the funds from any one of those particular articles that has gone unused, take care of the Council on Aging, and a host of other issues that we have here this evening before we go to the ballot box for an override. So when I see here, I'd like to know how it is we're able to transfer $32,000 from an appropriation, or $20,000 from an appropriation of last year with no mention of it in this article. We cannot move those funds without it being in the warrant, that we're taking it from this particular article and moving it to that. The only reason this board knows about it is because Mr. Pavlicek just got up and mentioned it, but it's not in writing anywhere here. I would also make, on a point of information, that the funding for all these articles, 64, be made available to the members of this body before we go voting on that.
What was your last point?
This, all of the, on Article 64?
All right, that's not gonna... All right, finish, please.
We should know if... there could be over $100,000 sitting right in Article 64 that we could transfer over to the Council on Aging and give the Planning Board their funding as well. What we need is a real... Seriously, Mr. Moderator, what we need is a comprehensive audit of all of these articles to find out where the money is.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. I really don't interpret that as a question. I interpret that as a lengthy comment. You're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen Coakley, Precinct 10. And I would just like to point out to folks that losing a town employee has more than the direct cost here, as we've discussed. I believe at length here, there's an unemployment cost associated with that. So there is no unemployment cost to be paid to a consultant that you stopped paying. So why should we pay... why should we lay off town employees when we... and pay the unemployment cost to them at this... when rather than slowing up or slowing down the work we're doing with a consultant and or putting it in the override? I don't comprehend that. And the second point I'd like to make is that someone just asked if there was money already available. I contend to every town employee and every Milton voter watching on TV, there is absolutely money available. We have seen at each, almost each Town Meeting session where the Warrant Committee either finds some money or someone else has provided some additional money to us, and it gets allocated. But not one penny of it got allocated by the Warrant Committee to the police, the fire, or the Council on Aging. That opportunity was there and has been there. But once again, how can we lay off town employees? Would you like to be laid off in your department? If... and pay the unemployment cost while we keep on consultants? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McCarthy, I recognize.
As a point of information, Mr. Moderator, this is not a town position. This is not an employee of the town of Milton. This is currently an individual who is working on grant funding and would presumably not be eligible for unemployment on the town of Milton's cost.
The person at the Council on Aging you're talking about?
The current outreach worker.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Heffernan, you're recognized.
Kathy Heffernan, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, I wish to move the question.
There is a second? Okay, that means on this, you may speak only once in no more than five minutes. You're recognized. Oh, wait a minute. Back up. It's not to be able... All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Questions moved. You may only speak once. Have you spoken? You've spoken?
Once from the time the question is moved?
No, on the... Yes, once from the time the question's moved.
So does he want to speak?
You may speak also, if you spoke before. From now on, you get one shot from this point on after the question's moved. Okay?
Town Meeting Member Diane DeTulio-Agostino from Precinct 8. I have a question and a comment. The question is, last year, this Town Meeting, through gifting, did appropriate the funding. So can we get an answer from the Personnel Board or whoever has the information as to whether that portion will in fact receive unemployment?
Can you say that question again? I really didn't get it. The question is?
Last year, this Town Meeting, and I can read the actual motion here, I would like to see a line item in there that says that we have an outreach worker. It is for 10 hours fi... oh, wait, sorry. That was Roger Connor. Sorry.
Are you making a statement or not? It doesn't sound like a question, Mrs. Augustine.
Well, it is a question, because Mr. McCarthy just made the statement that there was no unemployment cost. And this Town Meeting appropriated that funding last year. You'll recall, after one-hour debate, the funds were gifted to the town and appropriated through a line item for outreach worker. So will the Personnel Board or someone who's aware of the logistics of unemployment costs explain if that 10-hour service would then... she would then be eligible for unemployment?
That's been explained, Mr. ... That's been explained, Mr. McCarthy, that they're not, it's a grant and is not eligible for unemployment.
Mr. Moderator...
Is that not correct?
Mr. Moderator, I'm pointing out it was not a grant.
That it's not a grant?
That's right.
All right. Mr. Pavlicek, can you shed light on this issue?
I believe Mrs. Agostino is right. The money was appropriated in, by, through this town meeting last year. The money was received as a gift but was appropriated by this town meeting. My understanding, maybe the person, Steve Hennessy from Personnel Board would speak to it, my understanding is the person is eligible for unemployment.
Is the person who's going to be affected, a town employee, subject to unemployment? Mr. Hennessy, do you know? If not, we'll bump it over to the lawyers who aren't on the Personnel Board. But since you're both, I might get a two for here. Legal opinion and...
The answer is that the ultimate determination of whether the person will be eligible for unemployment is something that will be determined by the state, and I don't want ahead of time to take a position on behalf of the town. I think it is, Mr. Pavlicek's recitation and Mrs. Agostino's recitation is, I believe, correct, that what took place at the last town meeting was that the money was gifted to the town and was then appropriated, which would suggest, but I think not determinably conclude, that the person could be eligible for unemployment benefits. Keep in mind, we're talking, I believe, about the position here, the approximately $8,000 a year outreach worker. And I don't know the answer to a certainty.
Okay. All right, I think that's the best we're gonna do.
Thank you. And then my comment, I am, I'm still speaking, the comment, once again, to the motion, is that since there is such a strong feeling, and unfortunately, the explanation did not show the breakdown of the 32, or the motion might have suggested that we split the cost so that we could have at least moved the outreach worker, but at this late time, I will not present an amendment to do that. I will request that this leadership show the elderly in the Town of Milton that by our appropriating the funds to the Council on Aging versus to a consultant whose very process is, would be determined by an override vote on their part, that you go out and explain to the elderly the need for that position and that their daily lives not be negatively impacted, and that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? You're recognized.
Jack Marpolix, Precinct Three. First, I have a question for clarification. It's my understanding that this $32,000 is actually already present but being transferred to the reserve fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, it seems to me, and I'm not sure this is out of order because I've lost track of exactly what the question is, but...
Now, there's a motion to amend the recommendation of the Warrant Committee made by Mrs. Agostino that's on the floor.
Well, I'd like to...
You have to address that motion.
Right.
Okay.
So it doesn't directly address the question of the reserve fund.
No.
However, I think it relates to it in that if the money is there for the consultant, for the Planning Board, then really what we're talking about is whether or not the reserve fund could in effect be reduced by $32,000.
No.
We're not talking about that right now. But that's really what underlies this question because the Planning Board has already received the funds for...
Now, here's what's going on, okay? That money was appropriated last year. It's been brought into this year because it hasn't been expended. Okay? And where they brought it in, since you have to have funding sources for everything, that happens to fund the reserve fund. Okay?
All right.
The only point Mr. Whiteside was making was, gee, we had this appropriated last year and wanted to appropriate it again this year since we didn't spend it last year. And we have gone ahead with the expectation that we will get it since it was approved last year, and it's not going to hit the, it's not going to hit the tax levy at all because what we're doing is, since we didn't spend it last year, we're saying, here's your $32,000 from last year, but give it right back to us. That's all that's happening. It's a source of funding. Do I have that right, Mr. Pavlicek? Basically, okay. So that's all that's going on. You're really not implicating anything like that.
All right. What I wanted to suggest is that we could reduce the reserve fund and also keep the funds for the Planning Consultant, but apparently that's out of order.
Well, you can't do that on the present motion, that's for sure.
Right.
Okay.
Nevertheless, I think it would be helpful for people to know that that could be an option. And I say that because I have no doubt that having the outreach worker is very critical. We have a very large elderly population, as do most communities, and growing needs all the time. So I'm not proposing that we take away the money for the Planning Consultant, but I do think we should consider keeping the outreach worker if it can be done through taking money from the reserve fund. Thank you.
Okay. You're recognized.
Catherine Dunphy, Precinct Nine. Last year, this town meeting did approve a very generous gift to be used to move an employee, a outreach worker who was being paid for from a state grant to become an employee of the town. So there was an appropriation made last year. So that was basically the use of one-time money to provide a position for only one year, since it was one-time money. We're again looking at a situation where the town is talking about taking $32,000, which has been appropriated but not used, again, a one-time source of money, and using it basically for the purpose that it has not been used for this year because that report has been delayed and will not appear until next year. That would be an appropriate use. It's using one-time money for a one-time expenditure. I would like to make a case that it's very important that we continue to do planning in this town, but we might not always want to do $32,000 a year of planning. Therefore, it may not be appropriate to put that into an override question because an operating override is a permanent tax increase. I would also like to make the case that planning is important to this town. There's the possibility that we may achieve something in the range of $700,000 in new revenues because we are planning for changes in the Milton Village area. We would also like to look at possible changes to the East Milton area that could bring in additional revenues to the town. These are revenues that would provide tax benefits to all Milton citizens, particularly the elderly who are having difficulty staying in their homes. We need to help them by finding a new source of commercial tax revenue. Planning is exceedingly important. I'm not sure that this expenditure at this time is something that we want to put at risk. I think that planning would also provide benefits to the elderly in the sense that if we improve our business districts, that elderly who live in the neighborhood and may have difficulty getting to shopping centers out of town for their, their needs in terms of services, medical care, dental care, small shopping, would be able to walk to the nearby business districts, perhaps more in East Milton where the ground is flatter. But I do think that the planning money should be allowed to continue. It should not be made subject to an override this year when the planning services are so needed to provide that long-term commercial tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
Rich Livingston, Precinct Two. Mr. Moderator, my question is and was, is it legal for town meeting to appropriate last year funds for a particular article that this year we are moving into another area with no mentioning of the fact that we appropriated it for the Granite Ave project that didn't bear any fruit, and now we're taking that money and using it in an article that no one in the town is aware, that we're emptying and out, emptying out an article, that we voted the appropriation for a particular reason last year? And we're using it for something totally different from what this body voted for last year? It's just like the East Milton Environment had $2,400 in its committee, and last year we transferred it out, and this year we abolished the article after we took the money from that committee last year on town meeting floor. My question to you, is this legal that the town meeting convened last year, appropriate money for an article for a specific purpose, and then this year, we take it and appropriate it for something else? We use it as a reserve fund and appropriate it for something totally different from what it was originally appropriated for? It's like a shell game, and I'm trying to find out, is this legal?
Yes, the answer to the que... Are you done? The answer to the question is yes, it's legal. Anybody else wish to address the motion to amend? All right, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion to amend is defeated. So back to the main motion. Under Article 28, does anyone else wish to address Article 28? I see that one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people doubt that vote. You truly doubt that vote?
Come on! We have a lot of...
All right, quiet now. I mean, that wasn't even close, but you have the right to stand there. And we'll now take a, we'll take a, all right, those who want a vote, want a standing, those who want to have a standing vote, stand. I don't deprive you of your right to do so. If there are seven of you, we'll do it. How many are there? One? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right. We will have a vote. The tellers on this side, Phil Driscoll and Richard Neely in Section One, Susan Monack, Phil Murphy in the middle section, John Cahill and Martha Kemp over here. Point of information, what?
What happens if one of the seven members gets a vote and is seated behind the line? Does that person have a right to vote?
Well, they don't. All right, I call that person on the cusp back there, that's why I went over here. Are you sitting in, are you, are you a town meeting member? First of all, sir?
Yeah.
You are. And you're sitting right on the line, right?
Point of order.
Okay, that's okay.
Point of order?
What is your point of order?
He has a bad back.
That's a...
So he has to stretch.
Mrs. Agostino, that's not a point of order, okay? And, you know, we have to obey the rules here.
Mr. Moderator, I...
Now, quiet. You're recognized for what purpose? Why, for what purpose do you rise?
The point of order be...
For a point of order. State your point of order.
My comment is that the point of order is, since it is crowded, he is at the post where he can sit to comfortably do his ailment.
All right, all right. Mrs. Agostino, look, that's not a point of order. He is perfectly willing, and I am allowing him to sit there. I have not suggested he shouldn't sit there, and so I, you know, your comment isn't even necessary, okay? He's a member of this body, and he gets to sit there, and he's right where I think he should be. He's not really behind the line at all. So let's not go there for a controversy. Seven of you stood, and it's going to be a standing vote. All those who voted for this amendment, stand up and stand in your place, and please don't move because we want to get an accurate count. For those of you who thought it was too close to call that you needed this standing vote. Mr. Cale, do we have the vote there? Okay. Mr. Murphy, you sat in the middle? All right. Down. Those who oppose the motion to amend, please stand. Okay, over there? All right. Phil? Down in the middle? Mr. Neely?
Huh?
You do. No.
Yes.
Okay. Are you ready, Mr. Neely? Okay. All right. Section One, yeses and nos.
45, no.
Middle section.
87.
Third section.
Last year, 34, no.
There were 27 total yeses. And 166 nos. For those of you who thought it was too close to call. Anyone else wish to address Article 28? Hang on. Ann White, you're recognized.
Ann White, Precinct Nine. Could I just have some clarification on the numbers, and then based on that, I may have an amendment or a question about an amendment? What are the final numbers? What I have, originally, you had 285, 830, and under the contingency, you added a 46, 806, which add up to 332, 630.
No.
36, I'm sorry.
The grand total is 310, 872.
So what, when we've moved and shifted, the numbers should basically be the same, right? From the original? Except we've added 1,500 to this whole article.
The number on the grand total for contingent, non-contingent, is 310, 872, and for non-contingent is 31,584.
Can I ask a question then?
Sure.
I'm wondering if the money that came for the youth department came from that $100,000 that was found, correct?
That's my recollection.
Pardon me?
Yes, that is my recollection.
And so we... Um, and so we originally had earmarked 23,542, um, if the override passed. Now, some of that, I'm assuming, went to the extra money that was allotted for the Council on Aging under the contingency. But you still have a portion of money that we didn't do anything with. Am I correct?
Anne, you're either gonna have to make a question or make a comment or sit down.
My question is, if you've got another 13,000 there, I would like to make an amendment that you would add 10,000 of that to the contingency appropriation for the Council on Agents, Agents, the Council on Aging to fund a grant writer. Um, there's a lot of money out there, um, in grants, and possibly, if you had an override passed, they'd have some money to seek funds to support some of their programs.
So are you moving to add 10,000 to the contingent appropriation for the Council on Aging to fund a consultant grant writer?
If it's available, leftover from-
Now, it, it, at that point, it's infinite. You can, you can put a million dollars in there. It's all gonna be subject to the voters adding it to the tax levy. Do you understand the process?
I do, I do.
Okay, so it is no limit as to what you can put in that contingent line, except, you know-
Okay.
-realism and political astuteness as to how much the taxpayers may or may not want to, uh, spend.
Okay. Fine, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address Article 28? Mr. McCarthy wishes to address Article 28. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen rises to make an amendment to the recommendation of the Warrant Committee. At our meeting of last Monday night, a week ago yesterday, the Board of Selectmen had taken a vote to remove two, uh, sums of money from the DPW budget. We voted to remove $12,720 from DPW General and $15,720 from the DPW water line. Uh, the $12,720 is tax-side money and would presumably be, if that motion were carried by this body, available for appropriation. The $15,720, since it's an enterprise fund account, the water line would not be available, but the Board of Selectmen had planned on using that to slightly reduce the water rate. Uh, I just wanted to stand up and signal that we are going to be recommending a reduction of $12,720 in tax levy support in the DPW, which is Article 30, and would like to make a motion to add that $12,720 to the Council on Aging non-contingent appropriation. And I, again, have to do the math real quick here. To add $12,720 to the $80,002.93. And if somebody beats me to it, shout it out.
93,014. 014. Eighty-two, ninety-three, plus twelve, seven-twenty-one, or seven-twenty?
Plus twelve thousand, seven-two-zero equals-
Two-zero.
Ninety-three, zero-one-three.
Okay.
Which would bring the grand total of the non-contingent appropriation to, I don't actually have a subtotal from the earlier motion on that. Somebody have a current grand total? Three, one, zero, eight, seven, two, plus twelve, seven, twenty, is three, two, three, five, nine, two. Three, two, three, five, nine, two. That's the motion, Mr. Moderator.
Alright, you're leaving the, uh, non-contingent. Is that a motion or is that something the Warrant Committee-
Actually, well, no, act, no, in fact, thank you for mentioning that, because I think that we would want to reduce the, uh-
You don't have to, you know.
No, I know, but we should. We actually should, because I think for two reasons. One, it risks going over the table in Table 10. So the addition, the addition to the amendment would be to reduce the 22,002.9-
Oh, two-four.
Oh, two-four. By thirteen thousand dollar, by, I'm sorry, nope, do it again. Twelve thousand, seven-two-zero. Would be 93,09.
No.
Nope.
93,04.
Yep.
Alright, so the, in the wage and salary line, the non, the, uh, contingent portion becomes 93,04. The, uh, non-contingent becomes, uh, 93,013, and the total, uh, at the bottom of the page becomes 323, 592. Now, is that a change in the recommendation of the Warrant Committee?
Yes, it is.
No, you don't, you don't get to speak for them, Mr. McCarthy. That's your suggestion. We know habits are hard to break, but, uh-
I was trying to play-
You're on the Board of Selectmen now.
I was trying to play Edgar Bergen to Gwen Pavlicek's Charlie McCarthy.
Alright, is the Warrant Committee going along with this?
At least it wasn't Mortimer Snird. The Warrant Committee doesn't know the source of the cuts in DPW. This, uh, we had heard that they might be planning to take 12,750 from DPW. We don't know where it's coming from. Um, we don't have enough information about, uh, this particular, uh, motion. When the 100,000 dollars was, uh, was made known to us last night, there were a list of cuts proposed, a list of restorations proposed by the Selectmen. This wasn't even on it. Um, we're, at this point, uh, not gonna take this as a friendly amendment.
Alright, so that, that, you're making a motion, you're making a motion then, Mr. McCarthy? Okay? Does anybody second Mr. McCarthy's motion?
Seconded.
Has seconded. Alright. We will now hear debate on whether or not that, uh, those changes will be made to the recommendation of the Warrant Committee. The decision of the Warrant Committee is they don't know, because they weren't informed, which is a little distressing, Board of Selectmen, by the way. Mr. Giuliano?
Yes, Frank Giuliano, uh, town meeting member, Precinct 3. I support this motion and I ask for a, um, uh, move the question.
Alright, so if anybody else wants to speak, five minutes. Anybody else want to speak or do you want to go to a vote on this? Vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed?
No!
The ayes have it, so it's now amended. Alright, anybody else wish to speak to Article 28? All those in favor of the amended recommendation of the Warrant Committee, as just amended on the motion of Mr. McCarthy, which was seconded, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the amended recommendation of the Warrant Committee is adopted, and we'll take our, our seven-minute break here. Be, please be back at 5 after 9. Okay, we're on Article 29. Please take your seats, we have a ways to go. We have a Mercury Mass License 7708, JJ, it looks like. The lights are on. Mercury Mass License 7708, UJ or JJ. We're on Article 29. Article 29 is to see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, to establish a revolving fund to utilize fees received from the rental of facilities at the senior center for the purpose of operation, rental, and repair of senior center, center facilities thereof, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend money from such revolving fund, to determine a limit on the total amount which may be expended from such revolving fund in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2001, and to act on anything relating- relating thereto. Recommendation of the Warrant Committee is that the town vote pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 E and one-half of the Massachusetts General Laws to establish a revolving fund to utilize fees received from the rental of facilities at the senior center for the purpose of operation, rental, and repair of senior center facilities, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend money from such a revolving fund, and to determine a limit of $25,000 which may be expended from such revolving fund in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2001. Does anyone wish to address the recommendation of the Warrant Committee under Article 29? Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
Richard Livingston, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, on page 40, top line, where it says "to authorize the Board of Selectmen", I'd like to make a motion to change that to "the Council on Aging".
If you can't amend an article, you can amend the pending motion, which is the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, Mr. Livingston.
The... we're down below then, where it says "to authorize the Board of Selectmen" to change that to "the Council on Aging". The reason I make this motion, Mr. Moderator, is if you look at Article 47, Article 51, Article 52, Article 53, and Article 55, all those revolving accounts, several of which have been in existence for years, all give the authorization to the body of which the revolving account sits with, such as if it's a school committee...
Before we get to your reasons why, is there a second to Mr. Livingston's motion? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to change in the 1, 2, 3, 4th, 5th line of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, the Board of Selectmen to "the Council on Aging", Mr. Livingston?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
All right, you wish to be recognized to speak to the pending motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
You're recognized.
The reason I make this recommendation is the standard procedure for a revolving account is that the committees involved, such as the school department, when they rent this hall, they have a revolving account. The park department, when they do different things, they're revolving account. The initial intent of these 53 E and a half from Chapter 44 was that funds would stay within that department in order to be able to do, as it states here, the maintenance and so on, so forth. And we're setting a precedent by taking it, as I stated, Articles 47, 51, 52, 53, and 55. Each one of those departments have control over their revolving account, and I think that we should give the same courtesy to the Council on Aging to have control over their revolving account. Thank you, sir.
You're recognized, Mike.
Marjorie Jeffries, Precinct 5. My question is, are these rental facilities, will they be available for free for different departments in the town? For example, if the school department, or if the park department, or if the library, et cetera, would like to use these facilities, would we have to pay rent?
Will other departments in town, in order to be able to use that building, have to pay rent?
Exactly.
Okay, does anybody from the Board of Selectmen know the answer to that question?
At the moment, we don't have a written policy in place because the senior center is so new, but the practice to date has been to allow other town departments to use the facility free of charge. That is for meetings. Functions, on the other hand, might be a different story in the sense that there's a lot more wear and tear on the building. There is heat, light, and utilities like gas for a stove, for example, which we don't want to necessarily cost the department that is hosting. So I think I draw the line there, but basically going forward, I think we are probably going to have to determine some kind of a policy.
Well, I would like to respectfully suggest that you do not charge the departments, even if it's going to be a function of fundraiser or some such thing. After all, nobody has to pay these... Town departments don't have to pay these things for library purposes, and I think it should be a reciprocal arrangement with the Council on Aging and their building. The library, for instance, has no place at the moment to have any meetings, and yet we would like to be able to host various occasions, and it would be very nice if we could do it in that lovely new building, and I do not see why we would have to pay something for it. All of us have paid for this building in our taxes, and therefore I would like to see it be available for use for the town departments.
Okay, let's... Now, the pending motion is a motion to amend, and the question is whether or not the Board of Selectmen will be changed to the Council on Aging. So let's just address that narrow issue, and then we'll get back to the main motion. Yes, sir, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, I intend to address the article, not the motion, thank you.
All right, anybody else on the motion to amend? Yes, ma'am? Are you on the motion to amend, or the fundamental article?
No, the fundamental.
Oh, you want to wait, okay. Anybody else on the motion to amend? Position of Warrant Committee, Mr. Pavlicek.
All of the revolving funds in this town, as Mr. Livingston correctly shows, are delegated to various different boards. Those, however, the library, the parks department, and so forth, are elected boards. The elected board that sits over the Council on Aging is the Board of Selectmen. We feel it's best to leave it in the hands of elected boards.
Position of Board of Selectmen, Mr. McCarthy's recognized. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd add to that, that it's the town office building budget, not the Council on Aging budget, which is responsible for providing maintenance and custodial services to this facility. That is a budget that is directly under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen, so we too think it's proper and wrote the article accordingly, that this be a responsibility of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, we'll go to a vote. If you're voting aye, you're voting to change the Board of Selectmen in the motion to Council on Aging. All those in favor of the pending motion, say aye. Those opposed? Motion's defeated, but back to the main motion. Mr. Walsh, you're recognized on the main motion under Article 29.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Walsh, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, I believe that in the interest of time and fairness to all of the members in this body, that every question can be adequately addressed by a member speaking once and speaking within five minutes. And if the interest of that, I'm looking at the clock, we have only really worked on two articles, the majority of this night so far. We spent an exorbitant amount of time on articles in previous nights, and we have quite a few articles to go. And so again, it really is just in the interest. I believe we can be efficient, be effective, and still make our points. And as such, I believe the proper thing to do here, Mr. Moderator, and if it's required to do on article after article after article, I think it ought to be done. I would like to move the question to limit the debate once per person for five minutes.
Are you... now, Mr. Walsh, you can move... You can move all future questions if you want. You don't have to do it article by article.
Mr. Moderator, thank you, I move all future questions to limit...
Is there a second to move all future questions? All right, now, let me explain, this takes precedence. What this is saying is, now you can rescind it. Don't think you're stuck, okay? Well, all this says is that on each article, on each motion, that you will speak once and you'll speak for five minutes, except the Chairman of the Warrant Committee, who can speak once, also can speak last, which means the Chairman of the Warrant Committee can speak twice. That's right out of the bylaws. All right. All those in favor of the motion to move all future questions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, all future questions are moved. Okay, now, we're still on Article 29. You're recognized, ma'am.
Betsy Buckbinder, Precinct 11. The Council of Aging has established a building use committee, and I'm privileged to serve as its chair. At this moment in time, there is no mechanism in place to determine the usage fees. We are presently functioning with a temporary occupancy certificate, and we are not in a position to rent the facility at this time. As has been mentioned by Mr. McCarthy, there are a number of issues that have to be resolved in terms of the usage, the time, the insurance, the custodial issues. As of this moment, the Council is planning another meeting of the subcommittee, at which time I'm sure we will report to the Selectmen as to the mechanism that we put into place. Thank you.
Mrs. Agostino, you're recognized.
Diane DeTulio Agostino, Precinct 8. I would ask that... This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it was commented by the Chair that they aren't responsible for the custodial care and maintenance. I note that all of our other revolving funds do have for the purpose of maintenance and repair, such as Article 47. I would therefore ask if the Board of Selectmen would consider a friendly motion to have it read "purpose of operation, rental, maintenance, and repair of senior center facilities", so that we're sure custodial care will happen if it's rented.
Is your motion in writing? Is one word... which word is added? The purpose of operation, rental, and repair?
Maintenance.
And maintenance?
Maintenance, M-A-I-T-E-N-A-N-C.
And is that seconded? Okay. Mr. Pavlicek, you're recognized. Do you take that as a amendment to the main motion?
We will.
All right. That now becomes the recommendation of the Warrant Committee to add the words "and maintenance". I assume you strike, is rental, comma, repair, and maintenance of senior center facilities. Anyone else wish to speak to Article 29? Mr. McCarthy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen supports the amendment.
Anybody else wish to speak to Article 29? All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Those opposed? Recommendation of the Warrant Committee is unanimous. The adopted. Article 30 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2001, for the operation and maintenance and improvements of public works, and to act on anything relating thereto. Now, there are amendments. Mr. Pavlicek, you're recognized.
Not an amendment from the Warrant Committee, but correction of a typographical error. On the line just above the grand total, in the non-contingent appropriation on page 41, it says 2,836,744. That should be the same number as appears about three inches above it, 2,851,876. The total non-enterprise accounts line should have been carried forward. So it should be the same numbers above, 2,851,876.
I'm not clear. Which exact line are you changing now?
Second from the bottom, total Department of Public Works.
Oh, it says 2,836,744. That should be 2,851...
876.
876.
Should be the same numbers above it.
But the grand totals, all right? All right, now, is there an adjustment here for the shift in public works? So what comes down?
The Board of Selectmen would like to offer an amendment to the recommendation of the Warrant Committee. We would like to change the... On page 40, under non-contingent, public works general, we would like to deduct the sum of $12,720, the sum I referenced earlier. That new line becomes 943,090. The new subtotal for public works, also on page 40, becomes 1,201,183. The new non-enterprise subtotal over on page 41, still under the non-contingent appropriation, becomes 2,780,571. And on the non-contingent water operations and improvement, we would like to deduct the sum of $15,720 from the non-contingent appropriation under water operations and improvement. That figure would become... Oops, I have a wrong... Yep. I've got the numbers messed up. Can we work on that? Hang on. The figure of 775,343. We would deduct 15,720. Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. That's the... okay. Then I do have the right figure. I'm sorry, I was looking in the wrong column. Let's go back. The non-contingent water operation improvement deduct 15,720. That new line, which now reads 799669, becomes 783949. The new subtotal for water enterprise...
No, wait a minute, no. You're not naming your columns. That's the contingent amount. Is that the one you wish to change?
No, no. That is the non-contingent. The contingent amount in that line is zero. So I'm one column over. That's what threw me earlier, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what threw me earlier, too.
That's exactly what threw me earlier.
So the 79969 goes to what?
The 799669 goes to 783949.
Okay.
The new subtotal for water enterprise, non-contingent, becomes 2,515,692.
Say again?
Nope. We're jumping from column to column, that's the problem. I beg your pardon. 2605310 minus 15,720 is 2... Yeah, okay, there we go. That becomes 2,589,590. I'll just note that for my own. And the new grand total... Actually, we have to do total water and sewer enterprise, is that correct? So we have 7,089891 minus the same 15,270, 7074621.
Which line are you on, though?
Nope.
Total water, sewer, and enterprise?
Do you want to do this for me? Because I'm trying to...
Somebody should do it.
I'm... yeah. Right here. You're taking 15,720. That's correct. So it's 7074171. Okay. I can't do it with a calculator, and Glenn can do it without one. I'll put that away. The new total water and sewer enterprise, non-contingent subtotal becomes 7,074171. That's exactly right. And the new grand total is the 9 million... I'm going to have to add this, too, because we have two amounts coming out of this. And that's off my calculator and from Glenn's pencil, so they tie up.
So the grand total in contingent is 9913327. No. Non-contingent. 9913327. All right, what is the non-contingent amount in total non-enterprise accounts? Mr. McCarthy?
Give me a moment. I've got 2,780571.
Instead of 2,851876? Is that right?
Oh, I've got the... Thank you, buddy. All right, let's... Total non-enterprise account subtotal... 2,839156.
Say again, 2?
2,839156.
156, okay. Scratch that 2780?
Yes.
Okay. 2832156, total non-enterprise account. 2839156.
Who's confusing whom here?
No, I'm just writing down what you tell me, so...
Yes, okay, underwater and sewer enterprise, water operations and improvement, we deduct $15,760 from the 799669. Yeah, 15,720. Gives us a new subtotal of 783749.
749?
949. I couldn't read your writing, buddy. I couldn't read your writing, buddy.
And the total subtotal, Water Enterprise?
2,589590.
And the total?
Total Water and Sewer Enterprise, 7,074171. New grand total, 9,913327.
And what's the total Department of Public Works?
That ties out to the total non-enterprise accounts up above. 2,839156.
And the numbers on the first page are, under, uh, non-contingent is 943090 instead of 955810.
That's correct.
And under subtotal, it's 1201183 instead of 1213903.
Also correct.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Are you changing any of the numbers in the appropriation portion?
No.
Okay. All right, now. Read from the top, Mr. Lovely says. All right. All right, let's see if we can all get together here. Public Works General, the first line on the bottom of page 40, reads 943090 instead of 9558110. Can you track along with me, Mr. McCarthy, so we're sure we're, and then, and Mr. Mullin will get all this. Subtotal Public Works, instead of 1213903, it is now 1201183. Over on page 41, under total non-enterprise accounts, instead of 2851876 for the contingent appropriation, it now is 2839156. Under Water and Sewer Enterprise, the Water Operations and Improvement, instead of 799669, it is now 783949. Subtotal Water Enterprise, instead of 2605310, it's now 2589590. Total Water Sewer Enterprise, instead of 7089891, it's 7074171. Total Department of Public Works is now 2839156. And the grand total is 9,913327. Is that all the changes you've suggested, Mr. McCarthy? Does the warrant committee go along with that? You can have two seconds. Mr. Pavlicek, you're recognized.
The warrant committee will accept this as a friendly amendment, but we do note that the language of the recommendation at the bottom is going to have to change to meet the appropriation for Water Operations and Improvement. That number's going to have to be altered. Well, the, um, the sum of, uh, let's see though. The 2402063, reference two and three lines from the bottom of the page, is going to have to be decreased by 15,720. So I guess that's, right? Is it? 215,720? Yeah, it is. That's in the recommendation, two and three lines from the bottom. And, in two places. And then, that's the only, uh, part of the recommendation that's going to have to be changed.
Okay. We now have straight what's before the body. Mary Fitzgerald, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a comment. Mary Fitzgerald, Town Meeting Member for Precinct 4, and also one of the Town of Milton senior citizens, and I shortly will have to ask for an outreach worker to help me understand what's going on here tonight. This is the most confusing town meeting I have ever been to, and I would make the request that changes of this magnitude please be given to us in writing in the future. Makes me really nervous. It makes me really nervous to hear numbers being recited and then corrected and then recited again, and I'm running out of places to write on my warrant.
Especially with that short string. I don't disagree with the member. I would like to ask if there are going to be changes like this, that there can be better communication before the beginning of the town meeting between the selectmen and the warrant committee, because this is thoroughly confusing, is contrary to the traditional way that these two committees operate, and is a noticeable difference, because you're keeping the town meeting members waiting while you're doing math. And I don't like it as the moderator, and I would urge you, even though it's not my prerogative, to try to communicate before the meeting and get these things straight. And I will add that comment also. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Karen Friedman-Hanna, Precinct 2. I have a couple of questions regarding this amendment. I'm confused, as I'm sure other people are. I was under the impression that $12,720 was shifted into the Council on Aging's budget. I don't understand where this other $15,720 is going, and I'd like to know what effect this is having on the Water and Sewer Enterprise that, from my understanding, all year long is in disastrous conditions as well. And I'd like to make the comment that I feel that we really need to be working together as a town, not raiding one department for another. I understand, I absolutely appreciate the needs of the Council on Aging. I support them, and I wholeheartedly believe that they deserve the money that was allocated. However, I find this to be an extremely dangerous trend, and I certainly hope it's not a trend, to take from one and give to another. The perspective for each department is important to certain people, and it is crucial that we look at this as benefiting the entire town, and when there's an amount that's being put into the override for ongoing funding so that we don't have to come back and revisit this year after year, I think personally, I feel that every department needs to buy into this, to recognize what the needs of this town are, to bring it up to the level of funding that's needed. No more nonsense of one department needing it more than another. Every single department in this town needs more than it's currently getting, and we have to work together to get it up to that level.
All right, before you sit down, ma'am, can you just repeat the questions you had at the beginning? And we'll see, uh-
The question I had was, I thought that $12,720 was allocated from this money to the Council on Aging. The amount that was just taken out of this budget is $15,720 more than that. I'd like to know where that money is supposed to be going, and what effect this is going to have on the budget of the Water and Sewer Enterprises in the long run.
Mr. McCarthy, can you answer that question? McCarthy, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I can offer clarification, and gratefully, it does not involve numbers. In my own defense, Mr. Moderator, I actually did attempt to calculate this, but I erred in my mathematical calculations. I did do a sheet, and I did do it out ahead of time, but I simply goofed. As I explained earlier, the $1270 reduction in the Public Works General and the 1500, $12,500, now I'm completely confused, forgive me. These two reductions, we'll stay away from numbers, represent a policy decision on the part of the Board of Selectmen. It's the elimination of part-time office help in the DPW office, which we deem to be non-productive. And so as a policy decision within our own department, we voted a week ago Monday to cut these funds. We did, in fact, mention this to the warrant committee on Monday evening, that this vote had been taken, and that the $12,000 figure was available for additional appropriation. The $15,720 figure is just going to go away. It will not be a cost in the coming fiscal year, and that will be used, as I mentioned earlier, to reduce the rates to the Water and Sewer rate payers. So as a policy decision, we eliminated those positions, which, again, we felt to be non-productive. We're just going to take the money and reduce the Water and Sewer rates accordingly. The taxpayer support, the $12,720, we made available for additional appropriation. We didn't have a purpose in mind. We simply took the vote and made the money available, and it wasn't until this evening, when the motion was made from the floor to supplement the Council on Aging budget, that we thought that would be the best application for these funds. There was no calculation involved. It was simply, we had the funds available as of a vote last Monday night, and we applied them in a recommendation this evening.
Ellen Copley.
Yes, Ellen Copley, Precinct 10. I have a question on the current article. Two questions, in fact. Number one, could somebody please enlighten me on what it says on page, what it means on page 41, after grand total, especially when you get down to that second paragraph, which starts to meet the appropriation for Water, et cetera, that, that paragraph there, and then we have the same thing going on the sewer. So I don't need, I presume it's the same explanation for the sewer as it is for the water, but I, for one, have no idea what anyone's talking about. That's question number one. I have one other. Did, I'm sorry, was, should I continue with my second question?
No, I want to get all your questions.
Okay. My second question is, um, question, comment. I noticed in the Public Works Department, and I may have missed it in several other articles in the past, and I'm not picking out, I'm not specializing this comment to the Public Works Department. It would apply in general, but when we say that a department can exchange or trade in old equipment, um, and, I'm sorry, where it says, uh, is hereby authorized to sell at a private or public sale with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, equipment which is no longer required by the department, exchange or trade in old equipment for the same or similar items, discarded meters, et cetera, in this case, um, to furnish additional funds for the purchase of replacement items. I had two questions relative to that. When this is done, and I noticed it in several articles, are, is each department required to keep actual records of the funds raised by item? And the second question-
Records of the funds what?
The funds that are raised. They said that each department could raise the fund.
Oh, that are raised. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay.
And number two was, should those funds, in each department's case, shouldn't they be returned to the general fund and then released from there, rather than given back to each single department, so that there could be a more, a better decision as to where to use that money, possibly in the department it came from, or possibly in a more needy department?
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Pavlicek, you're recognized.
Let me answer the first question first. Those, to meet the appropriation paragraphs that are in there, um, the, the reference to the sum included in Schedule A, local receipts not allocated to the tax recapitulation, that line, which probably no one understands. Basically, all of this money is raised through the tax levy per se, but certain items on the tax levy are excludable. And essentially, the net effect of this line is to say that 2,402,0063 is, in fact, not raised off the property taxes, but is raised from local receipts, which is to say the Water and Sewer bills. So I mean, what, the, all the references through various articles here to Schedule A, local receipts not allocated and so forth, for the Water and Sewer Enterprise, those are references to amounts within certain budgets, which are attributable to Water and Sewer, and are, in fact, charged off against the Water and Sewer bills, not against the tax levy. So that's what those references mean wherever they occur, and they occur in various places.
And what about the, are there records of funds that are raised, if anything, old and sold, and does it go to the general fund, or what happens to it?
The records are kept indeed, and it doesn't go to the general fund, as the recommendation language notes, that it furnishes additional funds for the purchase of replacement items. So if you had scrap cast iron pipe, old meters, and those sorts of things that had scrap value, you could trade them in or sell them as scrap and use the money to purchase similar items within the departmental budget.
Okay. Mr. Sheffield.
Bob Sheffield, Precinct 4. If the basis for this change is a reduction in personnel, specifically the seasonal and part-time, shouldn't we change also the figure directly below the grand total, which indicates the amount that can be expended for salaries and wages, which now stands at 1,659,313, and which I believe should be reduced to 1,630,873?
Your suggested number is 1,630? 873?
873, yes.
873. Which is a reduction of 12,720?
Which is a reduction of the combination of the two, which is 28,440.
Now, that sounds reasonable. Mr. McCarthy? Yes, no?
Actually, our answer is no. That's simply a cap or a ceiling on the amount of money that could be, could be expended for salaries. This is a program budget. It's a little bit different than the average budget, in the sense that if you look at the other budgets, you're looking at it line by line. This is a program budget which allows the DPW to swap labor amongst various functions, from forestry to snow plowing, to water to sewer, and charge those costs out against a particular program, and assign the cost to a particular source of revenue. So if it's all the same to you, Bob, we'd prefer to leave it exactly the way it is, and there's no harm done.
That would be okay, but I would expect that if we're going to reduce the salaries by the 28,000, then we should reduce the ceiling by that 28,000.
Are you moving that? Are you making a motion to do that, or are you just making the comment? It's a maximum anyways, it's not going to make any difference, is what Mr. McCarthy said, but-
I think Mr. McCarthy is ill-advised in this area, but I'll go along with him.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to Article 30? All those in favor of the, well, maybe I better read it, right? All right. It's recommended that the amounts now are, under Public Works General, 943090, 258093 for a total of 1201183. The total total waste is 1637973, and total non-enterprise accounts of 2839156, with a contingent amount of 79,241. Water and Sewer Enterprises, Water Operations and Improvement, that number is 783949. The numbers are listed for a total of, subtotal of Water Enterprise of 2589590. Sewer Operations and Improvement, 384,290. MWRA assessment, 3888380. Sewer Capital, 211911. Total Sewer Enterprise, 4484581. Total Water Sewer and Enterprise, 7074171. Total Department of Public Works, 2839156, for grand total of 9,930. Total to fund of Public Works, 2839156, for grand total of $9,913,327? Seven? Twenty-seven, okay. Public Works Department is authorized to spend from the aggregate amounts appropriate to the sum of $1,659,313, but not more for salary and wages. To meet the appropriation for water operations and improvement for the MWRA water assessment and of the DEP assessment, the sum of $203,247 is to be transferred from the water surplus as of June 30,2000, and the sum of $2,386,343 is to be raised from the tax levy. This sum of $2,386,343 represents expenditures attributable to the water enterprise, which are to be included in Schedule A, local receipts not allocated to the tax recapitulation as water estimated receipts. To meet the appropriation for sewer operations and improvement and for the MWRA sewer assessment, the sum of $0 is to be transferred from the sewer surplus as of June 30,2000, and the balance of $4,484,581 is to be raised from the tax levy. The sum of $4,484,581 represents expenses attributable to the sewer enterprise, which is to be included in Schedule A, local receipts not allocated to the tax recapitulation as sewer estimated receipts. To meet the appropriations for landfill engineering, closure, and household hazardous waste collections, the sum of $87,000 is to be transferred from the landfill escrow account. Public Works Department hereby authorized to sell at a private or public sale with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, which is, equipment which is no longer required by the department, exchange or trade in all equipment for the same or similar materials, discarded meters, whether dismantled or not, in the usual course of its operations, to furnish additional funds for the purchase of replacement items. All those in favor of the Recommendation to Warrant Committee as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recommendation to Warrant Committee is carried. Article 31 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the purpose of acquiring easements for the Adams Street Bridge Project in Milton, to determine how said appropriation shall be raised and to act on anything relating thereto. This requires a two-thirds vote, and it's recommended by the Warrant Committee that the sum, $3,500, be appropriated for the purpose set forth in this article, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of $3,500 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to address the Recommendation to Warrant Committee under Article 31? All those in favor of the Recommendation to Warrant Committee say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. The Recommendation to Warrant Committee is adopted. Article 32, which also requires a two-thirds vote, is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for maintaining, repairing, improving, and constructing ways under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 90. Said sum or any portion thereof to be used in conjunction with any money which may be allotted by the state for this purpose, to determine how said appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing or otherwise, and to act on anything relating thereto. Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is that the sum of $324,296 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article, that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer be authorized to issue with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, bonds or secured notes in the amount of $324,296. The town vote to accept grants under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, in the amount of $324,296. The said reimbursements from the state, 100% to be restored upon their receipt to the town treasurer. Does anyone wish to address Article 32? All those in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee. Article 33 also requires a two-thirds vote, and that's to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant to Belazon, formerly Bell Atlantic, and N-Star, formerly Boston Edison Company, an easement within or near the former town of Milton landfill property for the purpose of installation, repair, and maintenance of above-ground poles and wires for the transmission of electricity, and intelligence and impertinent equipment and to act on anything relating thereto. Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, does the town vote yes? Does anyone wish to address, uh, Recommendation to the Warrant Committee under Article 33? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Bill Fitzgerald, Precinct 9. Last week, I received a copy of a letter that was sent to, uh, the Selectmen under date of April 21st, uh, along with petitions from 109 butters who opposed, uh, the sighting of a cell tower at the Public Works facility. There was a RFP that went out sometime last fall, I believe, and of those people I spoke to, none of them were cognizant of the fact that an RFP had gone out. I suspect that the 109 who opposed this are only the tip of the iceberg of opposition. And additionally, I believe that it's probably false economy, for one thing, trying to cite, uh, something on town land. For the money that you receive, I think the bid was $30,000 from one, uh, I could be corrected on that, from the one, uh, potential vendor. There potentially probably are around 100 houses around there whose assessment, uh, probably would be, would go down, and the town would realize less money because of this. One of the rationales, I believe, put forth, uh, for putting it on town land was the fact that, uh, well, the federal laws are so strong that we can't oppose them, and we have to let them do what they want to do. Well, I think some recent, uh, court cases have swung the pendulum in the other direction. As recently as, I believe, March 30th of this year, uh, in the, uh, First District Court of Appeals, uh, the Federal Court, they found for the town of Leicester, uh, in the, uh, in the town of Leicester, uh, case, they said that aesthetics could be a reason for rejecting, uh, the cell tower, uh, in spite of economics or anything else involved. The question I, I have, uh, that I'd like to have you address to the Select people is, number one, uh, is that RFP still on the table? If it is, if it is not, will it, uh, be put on the table again during your term? And, uh, secondly, uh, they, there were concerns with both, uh, Article 27 and 33, and then under Article 33, can, uh, with the language in Article 33, would that permit a cell tower? Uh, it seemed like ancillary equipment, uh, to the telephone lines can be put, uh, on that site.
All right. Now, that's a good question. Mr. McCarthy, can you answer this? Is, go ahead.
Two questions.
You're recognized, right. One is it, is it, is it, is what, Mr. Fitzgerald's referring to, does that have anything to do with this article?
No, specifically-
And even if it doesn't, he has a question, which is, is that still out there as a pending RFP?
As to the specific question on the article, uh, the cell tow, this is unrelated to cell towers on the landfill. This is related to the, to the poles that were in one place, that were in the way of building a golf course. We ordered the utilities to move those poles to a new location. As part of the agreement with the utilities, uh, we agreed to ask the town meeting for an easement to allow those poles to be relocated, and so this doesn't have anything to do with cell towers there.
Now, these poles, are these regular telephone poles, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
That carry, you know, like, electricity, telephone, and all that stuff? Okay.
Utilities in general, not, not specifically limited to electricity-
No, no, okay.
Utilities in general. And, uh, which is communications and electricity to the gas take station, which is owned by Algonquin Gas on the edge of the landfill property. And further, the, as far as the RFP goes at the town yard, the Board of Selectmen is in agreement with the residents who wrote us that letter and, in fact, voted to not accept proposals for monopoles at the town yard of the nature that you're concerned about, Bill, and, uh, actually sent a letter out to residents, uh, I'm sorry that you didn't get one, but we did send a letter out to the neighborhood informing them of our vote, which took place about a week and a half ago.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody else wish to be heard on, uh, Article 33, which requires a two-thirds vote? All those in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is unanimously adopted. Article 34 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to provide rehabilitation and our replacement of sections of the town's sewer system to prevent ground and surface water inflow and infiltration, to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to apply for and use federal, state, MWRA, or other funds for this purpose, see how such appropriation is to be raised and to act on anything relating thereto. Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is that the town appropriate $480,000 for the purpose of financing rehabilitation and our replacement of sections of the town sewer system, including costs incidental and relating thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $480,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, 5 of the General Laws as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen being hereby is authorized to accept and expend one or more grants or gifts from Massachusetts Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. Anyone wish to address the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee under Article 34? All those in, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is unanimously adopted. Article 35 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to provide a town-wide storm water management plan, to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to apply for and use federal, state, MWRA, or other funds for the purpose to see how such appropriation is to be raised and to act on anything relating thereto. It's recommended that, by the Warrant Committee, the sum of $277,000 be appropriated, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the Selectmen be authorized to borrow $277,000 and to issue bonds and notes therefore under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen being hereby is authorized to enter into any agreements that determine to be necessary in connection with the project and its financing, and is further authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Department of Environmental Protection or any other public or private funding source. Anyone wish to address the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee? All those in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is unanimously adopted. Article 36 also requires a two-thirds vote, and that is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to provide rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's water system, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to apply for and use federal, state, MWRA, or other funds for this purpose to see how such appropriation is to be raised and to act on anything relating thereto. And the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is that the sum of $677,180 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's water system, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $677,180 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8.5 of the General Laws as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. Anyone wish to address Recommendation to the Warrant Committee under Article 36? All those in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is unanimously adopted. Article 37 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to allow the town to purchase existing streetlights from Boston Edison as authorized by Chapter 164, Section 34A of the Massachusetts General Laws, relative to restructuring the electric utility industry in the Commonwealth, and to act on anything relating thereto. The Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease purchase agreement for a term not to exceed seven years for the purposes, uh, purposes of this article, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend money appropriated for street lighting under Article 21 of this town meeting for the purpose of this article. Does anyone wish to address the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee? All those in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is unanimously adopted. Article 38 is withdrawn. There was a pending question from members, whether or not that was proper. The rule that states that an article that is presented may not be withdrawn, uh, and that is a bylaw, that it, there has to be some action on it. The mere fact this warrant, uh, explains to the voters why the numerical system, uh, skips 38 by suggesting that something that had originally been proposed, but it was not exact, was not submitted to the town as a warrant article, because it was, quote, "withdrawn" in the, prior to that process happening, i.e., the warrant going out, does not put it in the class of cases, uh, upon which there can be no action. In other words, there is no warrant article under Article 38. So we're going to go to Article 39, which is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to establish a bicycling network in the town, set appropriation to be expended by the Board of Selectmen and to act on anything relating thereto. It's recommended by the Warrant Committee that no appropriation be made. Does anyone wish to address? Marge Sheffield is recognized.
The light is on, so now I'm on. I'd like to have a little change of pace here. I think we're all getting a little tired. This won't take long, with the permission of the moderator.
Yeah, it's not going to take more than five minutes, I know.
I'd like to have you all raise your hands to the, if you agree with the following questions. Do you think traffic in this town is becoming more and more of a problem? Raise your hand.
Yes.
Are you worried about the rising cost of gasoline? Do you wish you had more free time? The Center for Disease Control says one in four children are overweight. I'm sure yours aren't overweight, but do you think you, do you worry about it? Are you aware that air pollution is a problem and rising, and a significant cost of it are the SUVs? Not yours, of course. Do you want to have a money-saving, partial solution to the above problems? I'm representing the Bicycle Advisory Committee of the town, and it has an option for you and your children, but before we propose it officially, we want to make sure that our option is safe, and that is that for Milton schoolchildren from the fifth grade on up to bicycle to, to school or walk. The benefits are daily exercise, less traffic, less pollution, the gas money that you save from not driving your children to school would pay for a helmet, bicycle helmet mandatory, and a bike rack for their books. So next year, not this year, we will be asking you for money to make safe routes for schoolchildren to bike to school, and for safer cycling to get to the coming Napontet River Bike Pass, and in the process, safer driving for all of us. Note, Denmark saw where their traffic, air, obesity, obesity problems were going, and decided to create safe cycling for their children. Now 60% of their schoolchildren cycle to school, and Denmark is a wet and cold climate. Can we do as well as Denmark? Thank you.
Thank you, Marge. Good work. Anyone else? Recommendation to the Warrant Committee is no appropriation be made under this article. All those in favor of the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recommendation to the Warrant Committee, no appropriation be made, is carried. Article 40, uh, Mr. Pavelczek is recognized for purposethamending the Recommendation to the Warrant Committee under Article 40.
As I mentioned a couple nights ago, uh, we intended to put $4,000 additional into the non-contingent appropriation here. Before the meeting tonight, the, we met with members of the Board of Health, who have been examining their fee schedule and found that their fee schedule hadn't been adjusted in a while and was quite low in comparison with other towns, and have agreed to adjust their fee schedule with the expected increase in revenue of $7,000. As a result, we wish to add $11,000 into the non-contingent appropriation of this article, and this is the numbers that would be involved. For salary and wages, the number would be 103,223 in the non-contingent appropriation, The general expenses would be 3,928, 3928, for a total of 107-
Wait a minute, 3928?
3928, that's correct. For a total of 107,151, 107,151, that's the $11,000 increase. We would adjust the contingent appropriation slightly. The salary and wages in the contingent appro- in the contingent appropriation would be two thousand seven hundred and twelve. Two seven one two, and in general expenses, seventy-five hundred. For a total of ten thousand two hundred and twelve. That is the--
All right.
--recommendation.
And the recommendation of the warrant committee then is the town appropriate the amount shown on the following tabulation under the heading "Noncontingent Appropriation" at the town, and that the town appropriate the amount shown on the following tabulation in the column caption "Contingent Appropriation," contingent upon passage by the voters of the town of Milton, of an override ballot question under chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one C of the Massachusetts General Laws. And salary and wages, non-contingent is now one oh three, two two three, contingent two seven one two, general expenses, non-contingent three nine two eight, contingent seventy-five hundred, for total of one oh seven, one fifty-one, and a total of ten two one two. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Richard Livingston, precinct two. Uh, just a, uh, clarification. Fee increases, don't they usually come before town meeting for a vote, or I stand corrected?
All right, is that, uh--
That's my question.
That's your question, okay. Do you know? Mr. Pavlicek is recognized.
In this case, the, uh, fee increases because this is under the Board of Health. Do not come before town meeting for a vote.
Doesn't come to town meeting. All right. Now, I have a note that Mary Ellen Erlinson-- I mean, do you wish to speak? I don't see any good reason why you would-- why you would. All those in favor of the rise of recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Those opposed? Recommendation of the warrant committee is unanimously adopted. Uh, article forty-one, see if the town will vote to rejoin the Norfolk County Mosquito Control Project, and to authorize the board of selectmen and the Board of Health to sign any documents, and take any action necessary to accomplish that purpose, see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide for the purpose of this article, and to act on anything relating thereto. Recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town appropriate the sum of forty-four thousand six thirty-one for purposes set forth in this article, set appropriation to be contingent upon passage by the voters of the town of Milton of an override question, under chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one C of the Massachusetts General Laws. Marge Jeffries-- Marge? No. Steve Morash, you're recognized.
Steve Morash, precinct two. Mr. Moderator, I rise to, uh, support this article. Um, West Nile virus is here. We're gonna be living with it for the next, uh, years. Not sure how long that will be, but at least in the near future. Um, this town, as we all know, has forty-four percent, uh, open land. A lot of it is wetlands, as was pointed out during last year's debate over schools, and citing of schools and wetlands. Um, we have a amazing, uh, amazing amount of water that passes through this town. Some of it moving, some of it not. Therefore, West Nile virus and joining the Norfolk County Mosquito Control District program is a sound thing for this town, especially given the high elderly population we have that are at risk for West Nile virus. I have two questions. What is the town's plans for West Nile virus from the Board of Health, and also, to what extent does the MDC contribute to mosquito control, and if none, what are we doing to secure any funding for the-- from the MDC to lessen our town's contribution on this area where they own twenty-two percent of the land that is open land in this town?
I-- I didn't get the first question, Steve. What was the first question?
What are the town's plans for West Nile virus?
What are the town's plans for West Nile virus? Okay. Thank you. Now, Mary Ellen, can you answer those two questions, please, if you know? And also, um, is-- is Mr. Smith going to be here? He is here? Where is he? Up there. Can you come down to the front and speak? Mr. Smith has permission to speak. Now, can you explain who Mr. Smith is when we-- now, you will introduce Mr. Smith. Mary Ellen, go ahead. See if you-- first, can you answer Mr. Morash's question?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'm Mary Ellen Erlinson, Chairman of the Board of Health. Um, first of all, the Board of Health is very limited in what we can do to address the West Nile problem, um, because we don't have any funding for it. Basically, we-- we can do what we've done in past years when we were concerned about eastern equine encephalitis, and what we did last year when there was the concern about West Nile virus, and that is, we did a lot of education with the public, especially with children at camps, about, um, covering themselves, using, um, repellents when necessary, and also reducing, um, water laying around where, um, mosquitoes could start breeding. Um, we had no funds to do any type of, um, mosquito control in the town, and that's why the Board of Health supports this article. Um, however, um, as concerning the second question about the MDC, um, we do not get any contribution from the MDC, um, but-- and the MDC is not gonna be receiving any services, is my understanding.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to submit an amendment--
Okay.
--to the motion to read. Um, it's recommended that the town appropriate the sum of forty-four thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars for purposes set forth in this article.
That's what it-- that is what the recommendation is. All right, how are you changing it?
Um, I don't want it to be contingent on an override.
Oh, 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 okay. Yeah, stop where you stopped, is that right?
Right.
She wished to make this non-contingent. All right. Do you have any suggestions where we're gonna get this money? You don't have to tell me, but--
My suggestion, the only suggestion--
I made everybody else do this, though.
I know. The only suggestion that we have is the reserve fund. I haven't seen anybody else go into that. I know it's a problem. Um, is the motion seconded?
Now, it's seconded. It's moved and seconded, okay.
Can I address it?
You may address it, for no more than five minutes, okay?
Okay. Um, basically, um, the Board of Health supports us rejoining Norfolk County Mosquito Control Project. Um, as most of you know, we used to be members of it, and then in nineteen eighty-one, the year that Proposition Two and a half, um, came into being, we withdrew, and at that time, I think we were only paying about fourteen thousand dollars. Um, we've been doing okay. We haven't really had any major problems. We haven't had any problems in town. However, two years ago, West Nile virus came into the United States, um, especially the northeast corner. Um, in nineteen ninety-nine, New York got hit. Um, and we got hit in-- in two thousand. Luckily, we didn't have any human cases, but, um, if we follow the pattern that New York had, we would be expected to see some cases. Now, we can't guarantee that that's gonna happen, however, that is-- it's expected it definitely will be seen in Massachusetts this year. Presently, we are the only town in Norfolk County that is not involved in a mosquito control project of some kind. We think that to protect the health of the public, that it's necessary that we join it, because we basically are not doing anything to, um, control the mosquito population. And in the event that we did have, um, West Nile virus, um, that was recognized to be in Milton and dead birds, and the fact that we didn't have any last year, it doesn't mean that it wasn't here. It just means that we probably didn't catch the particular bird, uh, because it was in surrounding communities. Um, but the fact that we-- we strongly suspect that it is going to be here, and we won't have any money, um, to do anything about it. We cannot join the project in August. Um, we have to basically join it now and become, um, full members. I think what we have to do is to look to the experts in this matter. Uh, Marge just quoted something from the CDC. We are going to be quoting from the CDC also. The-- the federal government basically, um, issued a report, um, the Centers for Disease Control that came out in April of two thousand and one, and they say, "The most effective and economical way to control mosquitoes is by larval source reduction. Experience suggests that this is best done through locally funded abatement programs that monitor mosquito populations and initiate control before disease transmission to humans and domestic animals occurs." The Massachusetts Department of Public Health has issued several alerts to local departments of health, and they are saying that the only way that-- that we can really control this is to be a member of a local mosquito control project. I think that we have to look to the physician experts, to the entomology experts, and what they're telling us. Everything that the Board of Health has received has said that you have to join a project in order to be able to abate the source, and in also to-- to be able to respond if we do have a problem in town. Basically, we're asking for forty-four thousand dollars. It's an awful lot of money, and I know it's gonna reduce the reserve fund by quite a bit of money. I don't know where else to go for it, but the Board of Health feels so strongly that it's necessary for us to join this project, that we felt it was best to bring it to you, the town meeting members, to make that decision for the public. We strongly recommend it. We understand the constraints. Now, uh, Mr. John Smith has been waiting here for quite some time tonight. He's been very gracious waiting, and, um, he is the Director of the Norfolk County Mosquito Control Project, and he's going to address you to tell you some of the specifics about how the, um, project works.
All right, Mr. Smith has been given permission to speak, but you can only speak for five minutes under the current rules. Thank you. Norfolk County Mosquito Control.
I just wanted to, uh, I came tonight in support of the Board of Health to, uh, hopefully get into a-- a more proactive mosquito control program than they saw in New York City in nineteen ninety-nine. They basically were reacting to a situation that occurred about midsummer. They brought out the big guns, and that's not what we're about. We're-- we believe in preventative measures. We believe in, uh, sensitivity to the environment, and we believe in a lot of surveillance and understanding before we-- we do any control efforts. We use source reduction, which is an effort not to use any pesticides at all, and, uh, things like doing rain basins, which are-- there's certain species that breed in containers that we think is gonna be very important in the transmission of West Nile. So we're looking at those kind of things. We're also considering, uh, some larva sighting actions, which you do use pesticides. They call them biorational pesticides, very sensitive to the environment, and we're hoping to try to do most of our control efforts in those two areas. If, uh, with, uh, the Board of Health will decide on any adult deciding we do, which is the-- the applications that you see on the evening news, uh, we try to minimize those, but if we have a high risk of West Nile, or triple E if it happens to come up, we leave that decision to the local Board of Health. I believe strongly in leaving the decision, a lot of the decision in the hands of the local communities, and we do this-- we have twenty-four communities we're working in now, and, uh, we have a lot of input from the, uh, local community. So I'm bad-- I could talk for hours on mosquito control. I'm sure you don't want that, but, uh--
Not tonight.
You, uh, you certainly have a lot of important issues tonight, and I-- I'm just here to support the Board of Health and to answer any questions that might come up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wish to-- thank you very much. Town appreciates you taking the time to come. Anyone else?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, you're recognized.
Mike Lynch, uh, precinct six. A number of the voters in my precinct have asked me to speak on this issue. The, uh, since we're on the water there, near the Naposet River, we're certainly in favor of the town doing something to try to remedy or rectify some of the, uh, dead birds that have, uh, certainly been in my house and, uh, on my neighbor's house over the past year. Um, I know the hour is late, and, uh, I'm sure would all like to, uh, go home. I know I would, but I just wanted to, uh, stand up and say, you know, please, we need to do something, uh, in support of, uh, this article, and, um, I ask the question, be moved.
Okay. Roxanne, you're recognized. Oh, sorry. Yes, hi. You're recognized.
Martha T. Curtis, precinct eight. Um, the estuary where they would be doing the spraying, the larva side, uh, the-- that would not be taken care of this year because, uh, I believe the contract doesn't start until the fiscal year, and therefore, uh, all of lava of the, uh, uh, mosquitoes would, uh, they would have hatched. Uh, therefore, uh, this year would not be taken care of, although the, uh, adult, uh, uh, spray that they use might be. The Naposet River watershed, uh, is also, uh, tending to the, um, estuary, and the estuary is the most important link in the environmental food chain, and, uh, I don't think we need another pesticide to, uh, uh, reach our goal of, of, uh, the, uh, getting rid of the mosquitoes, uh, problem. Uh, also, mosquitoes are building up, uh, resistance to these pesticides, and at this point, we don't have the problem yet, but mosquitoes are recognizing that they're being chased after, and, um, they are building up a, um, resistance to it. May I say that the easiest way, uh, simplistic way to avoid this forty-four thousand dollar, um, expenditure is by going to the drugstore and buying some DEET, rolling down your sleeves, and keep-- and not wear pants. Well, yeah, wear pants, but-- Wear-- wear-- don't wear shorts, is what I meant to say. Uh, and put-- put DEET, uh, on, upturn your, um, well, receptacles that you might have water in. Things that we can do, and it costs nothing just to step outside your door and tip over the birdbath and put fresh water in. That's the way you can get around the forty-four thousand dollars, and I suggest that's the most practical way. I guess that's just about my views on the subject.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
Yes. Richard Livingston, precinct two. I rise to support the amendment. The reason I do so, uh, Mr. Moderator, is for twenty years, since nineteen eighty-one, we have not, uh, been a member of the Norfolk County Mosquito Control District, and as stated earlier, we have a lot of brooks and waterways. We're on the, um, Naposet River in one area. We have a lot of leach aid over at the, uh, landfill and where precinct eight, uh, uh, envelopes, the landfill, and the mosquitoes have grown so big now, you can put a saddle on them and ride them in the summertime, and I think that it's time that we do some sort of preventive maintenance, uh, if not this year, starting next year, so I wholeheartedly support this, uh, amendment.
Thank you. Roxanne?
Hi, Roxanne Musto, precinct five. Um, I rise to support this article. I think it's very important that we rejoin the Norfolk County, um--
Okay, we're still on the amendment, you know. I mean, the amendment is to make-- move this from the contingent to the non-contingent.
I have a couple of questions and a comment. Is that--
Okay.
Um, a couple of things that I wanted to say was, I think that the, um, effort about prevention is very important to-- and that should be continued. However, I do believe that they should rejoin. Um, one-- a couple of questions I have involve, for the town of Milton, maybe Mr. Smith would be able to answer this. Um, they do talk about the integrated marsh management. I was wondering what specific, um, areas of town they were thinking might be treated besides that particular area, um, with what types of treatments, if you've looked at the town, um, and also with the cost factor. Um, my understanding is that twenty-- about twenty-two percent of the town is MDC-owned, and I understand that that would not be treated, and I wanted to know how that factored into our rate, because I believe that we should rejoin, but if there's a way that the rate, um, of forty-four thousand could be reduced somehow by looking at that issue, that would be important.
Okay. All right, now, um, I'm gonna get answers to that, but I'm gonna have to move this along, 'cause it's getting late, okay? I'd-- I'd like those who-- the pending motion is merely to switch from contingent to non-contingent, and I want you to address that and save your remarks. We'll try to get the answers. Mary Ellen Erlinson, I assume you got the two questions. What-- which are, what parts of town are, uh, potentially, uh, subject to integrated marsh management, and secondly, is there some way of reducing the fee because, uh, of the large percentage of land that is owned by the MDC? But is-- I'm gonna get to a vote on whether or not we're gonna be-- this is gonna be contingent or non-contingent. Mr. Vergona, do you wanna address the motion?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay.
Uh, John Vergona, precinct six, town meeting member. While I support the initial recommendation, I do have a question, and that is, uh, is the amount being proposed a recurring annual event? Uh, for if it is, I have a concern about, uh, uh, taking recurring expense and, uh, uh, taking the money from the reserve account.
I-- I didn't get your question, though. The question is--
Is-- is the amount being proposed a recurring annual event?
Is it a recurring-- yeah, oh, that's a good question. Very good question. Is this an an-- Mr. Pavlic-- is this an annual fee?
There is-- my understanding is there's an annual membership fee, but it would be a-- a choice every year as to whether you joined. a choice every year as to whether you joined. But if you were to stay in, yes, you would pay every year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On the motion to amend. Contingent or non-contingent?
Ginny Donahue King, Precinct Three. In order for us to decide whether we want it in the contingent or the non-contingent portion of the, of the budget, I think we need to know some answers to questions. I have two that I can think of...
Okay.
...that I'm sure that you can direct to the right people. One is, my understanding is that DEET is cancer-causing, particularly on children. And they're the ones that are out playing at night when the mosquitoes are out. The second one is, one of the earlier members that spoke had said something about it being too late this year to do anything about the mosquitoes. My understanding is the life cycle of a mosquito is, you know, a couple of weeks maximum. Could we have some answers to that to see that this is an ongoing thing that we would have to be looking at, that actually would do something this year or not do something this year? I think that would help us out.
All right. And don't, don't sit down, because I want to be sure you have your questions. First question is, does somebody know whether DEET really is cancer-causing? Is that the question?
If there, if there's somebody, if there's a doctor in the house that can tell us what the side effects of DEET are, particularly on children.
On children. All right. And secondly, is it really too late to do something about the mosquitoes?
Right.
Right, all right. Now...
I think it has to be an ongoing process.
Okay. Now, does anybody know the answers to those questions? Mr. Smith? Thanks for staying. Is DEET cancer-causing or not? And what is DEET anyway, for those of us who don't know?
I can't give you the long name for it, but it's the active ingredients and the, most of the commercial repellents that are available. I haven't seen any data personally that indicates that it's carcinogenic to children or adults. They do recommend in children that you don't treat infants and that you don't treat young children with over 15% DEET, and you can go up to 30 on adults.
All right, is it too, all right, second question. Is it too late to do anything about mosquitoes?
No. It is, it is late for the spring brood, but we also have summer broods, both inland and salt marsh. And to clear up the point about the estuaries, I believe somebody said, is the salt marsh mosquito is probably going to be Milton's most important species. It's very aggressive, and I have heard that they have saddled a few of them in Milton. But, uh, real quickly, the good, the good news about the, the salt marsh situation is we have the integrated marsh management, which somebody mentioned. And if we can, it's basically a restoration process for the salt marsh. And if you look off of the Southeast Expressway, some of these salt marshes are in pretty tough shape along the Ponset River. We have a system where we go in and recreate ponds and pans and things on these salt marshes, which restores them. It has excellent support of the environmental groups. It creates habitat for shorebirds, and it controls the salt marsh mosquitoes. And the ultimate result is no pesticides are needed for a long-term salt marsh control. So IMM will be very important in the strategy used in Milton.
All right, so the IMM goes to the various salt marshes that are in town?
That's correct. And the inland part, it's after heavy rain events. So you can have, you can have an inland mosquito problem about 10 days after any five-to-10-inch rainstorm. So those will, we will be able to use the proactive approach against.
All right, and I gather you're not going to reduce the fee because we have so much MDC land, are you?
No, beca, and, and the reason for that mostly is because there's not a lot of breeding area on. If we're going to go proactive, MDC does not have a lot of breeding areas because it tends to be part of the Blue Hills area and not conducive to mosquito breeding.
Okay, all right. Mr. Kayla, you're recognized. Thank you, Mr. Smith. On the motion, which is contingent versus non-contingent?
I'm Bob Kayla from Precinct Two. I rise to support the amendment to change this from a contingent to a non-contingent As a former member of the Board of Health some years ago, I have an interest in this. And really, I can't believe that the town of Milton would put such an item as this that is so important to the health of the town, all members of the health of the town, put it on a contingency basis. I just can't believe the town of Milton would do that or should do that. And I would simply ask the warrant committee to reconsider what they're doing. Because this is a public health matter and a serious public health matter, and to ignore that, I think is simply wrong. Thank you very much.
All right. We're ready to go to a vote on the motion to amend. I'd like to get the recommendation of the warrant committee. You're for or against the motion to amend?
The warrant committee is against the motion to amend. While we recognize the important nature of this, we don't see that taking money from the reserve fund is the way to do it. And it's in the override recommendation simply because we couldn't find money in the non-contingent appropriation to pay for it. The reserve fund at $300,000 in budgets as tight as these across the board is going to be absolutely drained next year. It's one-time money. This is potentially an ongoing cost of the town. It should be funded on an ongoing basis. That's why we think it should be in the override. We are adamantly against taking anything from the reserve fund at this point, really for any reason.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a position on the motion to amend? No position. All those in favor of the motion to amend say aye. Those opposed?
No.
That motion is defeated. Now, we're on the main motion. Anybody wish to speak to the main motion? Marge Jeffries, you are recognized.
I feel as though I'm coming into the lion's den, and the lion is a mother cub, a mother, and has cubs. Because I would like to most respectfully disagree with the Board of Health and with the Norfolk County mosquito control people. On the subject of how important is this? I think that we have been, and I'm not impugning anybody present, but I think the news and the media and whatnot have sold us rather a bill of goods. The West Nile virus is here, and it is in birds, and it is prevalent. But the, as far as humans go, it is not a very lethal virus. Many people get it. Some people don't even know they have it. They think they have a slight case of flu. And it was mentioned in New York, a lot of people in New York got it, but only a few died. So this is, this is not in the same area as, well, I hate to say it, but cancer or a lot of other things. What I would like to speak to is, everybody wants to make their children safe. We don't want risk. But I would like to tell you that actually, there is no way that we can make this town have no mosquitoes. And that's the only way we can really make this thing safe. There are two, as, as many people have said, this town has a great many places of water in it. Never mind even the tire that's left out or the pool, if somebody's kid's pool that's left out and gets a little stagnant. There are many, many pools and ponds and streams and depressions in the granite and so on. And the Blue Hills has a great many ponds and streams and depressions in the granite, in case you didn't know. The, the life, the life cycle of a mosquito is something like two days. And these proposals to larvicide the pools uses or have been, are going to be using something called BT. And as an aside, BT was, was promoted as something that killed only gypsy moths. Remember back then? Well, now it's being promoted as something that only kills mosquitoes and midges and black flies. I don't even want to get into that road. But it is not long-lasting. And methoprine, which is the other larvicide, is also not long-lasting. So you kill off a generation of mosquitoes, and three or four days later, there's another whole generation. So is, are we really going to have people larvicideing every single pond and piece of water in the whole town every few days after every single rain? I don't think $44,000 is going to cover that. I also would like to speak to the marsh, uh, uh, problem. The MDC, along with several other agencies, is in the process of changing the marshes a great deal. They, there's going to be an effort to get rid of the phragamites. The phragamites is an exotic marsh, uh, plant that you see everywhere. You can't dig it out, you can't burn it, you can't cut it. But one way you can get rid of it is to soak it in salt water. They like brackish water. It does not live in salt water. So what they are proposing to do is to make sure that the salt water comes and gets rid of the phragamites. So we're going to have lots of salt water. They also are going to be removing and changing the position of the, the stuff that came out of Southeast Expressway when it was built and was dumped in the marsh. So there's going to be a great deal of activity in this marsh this summer.
Yeah, one, one more minute, Marge.
Thank you. And therefore, I really think that perhaps it would be misplaced to be spending $44,000 on marsh stuff when it's already going to be turned upside down, as it were, by these, by these other proposals. I have talked to several people, one of whom is in the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Peter Merrick, and about the possibility of what will happen to our brunal pools, our ponds, our streams, to the amphibians with the spraying. And both he and other people have said, there have been no studies of what happens to amphibians. You know that frogs are going the way of all fresh. Maybe frogs are the canary of our world. You know, the miners' canaries. And when the frogs are disappearing, it's something to be very unhappy about. This, this larvicideing could have the same kind of unintended consequences that we never foresaw with DDT. You know what happened to DDT. And I'm not, I don't think it's worth taking the risk for what will be done to our waterways in order to not really protect all of you at the expense of 44. And if you want to know what to be done with the $44,000, I would suggest you put it in the library budget.
Okay. Thank you, Marge. Anyone else? Tom Marash, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Marash, Precinct Two. I rise for point of clarification of what I've just heard here. Among other things that I do for a living, I seem to be the West Nile virus coordinator for the City of Boston's Emergency Management Agency. We've been studying this issue since last November, and actually, when we got hit with West Nile virus in birds back in July, you might have seen it, all over the media. Larvicideing is not something that, I think, people misunderstand right here, including the last speaker, with all due respect. Larvicideing goes after larvae-stage mosquitoes, a very specific mosquito. It's dropped in Ketch Basins, where we have standing water that we can't empty too much, too easy. It does a very horrible thing to mosquitoes. It keeps them to be teenagers, which is a very dangerous thing, I think. I think I want to get people out of teenage stage right away. The adulticide that I think the mosquito control program does speak to is when we get by this stage. And that would be spraying only issued under an emergency declaration by the State Department of Public Health. The current guidelines that we are using in the City of Boston and in all the surrounding towns that surround Milton really cry to the fact that, you know, unless we have a human case, we will not be spraying. So I think that's an issue that has to be understood.
All right, your, your point of clarification has been accepted. But this is your second time up, so...
I understand, but there was some misinformation going around.
No, okay.
We also do not hit moving water, like in the Ponset River, and the estuaries with this ingredient. So some of those things really are not the issue that I just heard about. Also, the lifespan of this ingredient is between 15 and 70 days. It's not a two-day dose, if you will. It stays in the Ketch Basin. It only gets activated when the Ketch Basin is wet. So some of these issues have been, we've been dealing with in public health circles for the last year and a half, two years down to New York. And I think a lot of those concerns really have been addressed. Thank you, sir.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Now, here's, all right, let's go to a vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have and the recommendations of the warrant committee is carried. Now, we're going to adjourn shortly, but you may need one minute, which will help at the next session, as we try to improve efficiency and communication. Mr. Pavlicek is recognized to inform you on the five articles that are lacking a recommendation. And then we're going to recess and then pick up with Article 42 on Thursday at 7:30.
Since we seem to be coming, coming in danger of getting towards the end of the warrant...
Thursday.
Yeah.
Next meeting's Thursday, for those of you saying Monday. All right, Mr. Pavlicek, you're recognized.
Since we seem to be coming in danger of getting towards the end of the warrant, let me bring you up to date on the five articles at the rear of it, which are, did not have recommendations as we went to press. They are Article 57, and a couple just following it. Article 57 is the long one, the planned unit development, for which you probably picked up a sheet from the planning board on your way in with their justification for it, to let you know the warrant committee is going to recommend that the town vote yes on this article. The next article without a recommendation is Article 59, the town planner article. That is going to be, we're going to recommend that be referred back for further study.
To whom?
Uh, the planning board. The Article 61 doesn't have a recommendation to see what sum the town will vote to obtain appraisals with regard to Milton Village. We're going to recommend that the sum of $12,000 be appropriated for Article 61. Article 63 is a change in the zoning bylaws. We're going to recommend that the town vote yes. And finally, Article 65 was to see if the town will vote to rescind the borrowing authorization on the landfill. We are going to recommend that the town vote yes on that one as well. So those are the articles without recommendation currently.
All right, we do have this hall on Thursday, and the town meeting will be held Thursday at 7:30. Entertain a motion to recess until then. Move second, all those in favor say aye. Ayes have it. Okay, see you Thursday. Thank you for your patience.